Good evening. I hereby call the regular meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum is present and notice of this meeting was legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Board Member Menden Winslow is unable to be here tonight. She's spending an evening with her daughter last performance, and so we're excited for her and her family. Please remember that items do not have to be taken in order to show on the agenda, and please join us in turning your cell phones to silent mode. The board will now conduct the exact closed session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act and as allowed by the Texas government code sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. It is now 5:01 PM. Thank you.
The board is now reconvening in open session at 6:00 PM. This month, the spotlight is on Nacogdoches High School. We want to thank you for decorating the bulletin board at Nacogdoches High School here at DSN with pictures of high school students engaged in all wonderful opportunities that the high school provides. Thank you, the wonderful bulletin board back there with all the great activities taking place. I will now call on Principal Dr. Ron Crespo to give the invocation, and at the same time, Dr. Crespo, we'll turn it over to you for our pledges from Dr. Whitbeck and the student council. Thank you.
Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our school events and for all of our staff members, community members, and students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in all we do and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in our schools. Give us insight to lead with integrity, that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness and pettiness. Help us to make decisions that are good for all and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory to be, all glory be to you, Lord, now and always through Christ and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Yes.
Okay. Good evening, President Neal.
Yes.
Board members, interim superintendent Fraley. Next, I want to introduce Dr. Katherine Whitbeck, who will introduce our student council members who will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Dr. Crespo. Good evening, President Neal, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. I am Katherine Whitbeck, and I have the privilege of being the advisor of the Nacogdoches High School Student Council, and I think you can tell by all those photos that you have in the executive room, and if you ever have a chance, everyone go and see those. Oh, no wonder I'm tired. These are a group of busy young men and women. Their purpose is to participate in government and share a student voice and participation at Nacogdoches High School and the community and beyond. They have worked hard this year. They have served their brothers and sisters at Santa Fe High School in their times of trouble, providing money to them for their student council to use that money as they see fit. They have homecoming, which is our big event, but then we also celebrate Red Ribbon Week, Pink Out Week, and we honor our veterans every year with a reception this year with National Honor Society and Key Club helping us host. We celebrate our diversity at Nacogdoches High School and beyond with the piecemeal. And we go into February with competition amongst all of our departments in raising money for the American Heart Association at the Hardy Heart Race. We provide our teachers and other faculty and staff with lots of, as much Kleenex as we can. That's their gift, and they like those gifts. So I'm glad to have these students this evening. They are letting you know that they have received statewide recognition as well for the seventh year in a row. They have received this lovely blue ribbon that President Diamond Porter is holding. Thank you. And she is also holding the plaque that is, the perpetual plaque that is in our office at Nacogdoches High School for the Outstanding Student Council. And so I am going to let the students introduce themselves and the others have some of the other awards we run through the Texas Association of Student Councils, which is under the auspices of the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, and we provide service and leadership for our students. All right, Diamond.
Hi, my name is Diamond Porter. I am currently a senior at Nacogdoches High School. I've been in student council for two years, and I plan on going to Angelina College to get my basics.
Hi, my name is Trey Jones. I am a sophomore at Nacogdoches High School. I've been in student council for two years, and I am the treasurer-elect for the 2019 to 2020 school year.
Good afternoon. My name is Kayla Scarsiga. I am a junior. I am currently treasurer of student council and president-elect for next year. We also got an award for Texas, from Texas Association of Student Councils for energy and environment.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Borgia, and I'm a current student council member, and I've been a member for a year, and it's been awesome. And next, oh, next year, I'm going to be a co-chair for the DASH committee, and we earned from the TSA the Outstanding Program for Community Service.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lee. I'm a current member of student council, and I'm elected secretary for next year. Student council also got outstanding for pride and patriotism award.
Dr. Whitbeck, before you proceed, we just want to thank these students for all the awards and all the many things they have done. So, boy, we help me and all the students.
Thank you all. Thank you.
To let you know, if they receive these five individual awards, that's when they get that blue ribbon. So, we're proud to have seven hanging in room 215 right now. And at this time, we are going to let President Diamond Porter lead us in our pledge, and then our president-elect lead us in our pledge to the Texas flag.
Please stand for the pledge. I honor, oh, I did it again. Next second year in a row, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all, Dr. Crespo, Dr. Whitbeck. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We all want to get in the center here to take a picture.
And while we're taking pictures, parents, if there are parents available standing here for these students, you're welcome to take pictures. And then the parents, I feel like these may be driving. Captain. Thank you. Thank you, students. Great job. Continued great work at student council. Looking forward to next year. Thank you. That brings us to our celebrations and information items. First of all, Mr. Les Limbarga with the recognition portion of the meeting. Tonight, we'll be recognizing some high-achieving students and award-winning employees. So, Mr. Les Limbarga, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Neal, board members, and interim superintendent Fraley. As you all might have noticed, the past two or three months, Dr. Crespo and I have gotten very familiar with one another through email and text messages. And that's a good thing, because it's been to honor and recognize some of his students, like we just saw here with the student council. A total of another 36 numbers of students from Texas Student, yeah, Technology Students Association and FFA, and as well as our math counts team from Mike Moses is going to be recognized tonight. Let me go ahead and have Dr. Crespo come back up here, and he is going to name off some students. We're going to start with the TSA students and then recognize the FFA students. Dr. Crespo. Good evening, again. So I'm a proud school dad here, again, with our students that do so many great things and make us look great every single day. So, start off with our Technology Student Association, our very own. Samuel Jacobs was voted the Technology Student Association Texas State Vice President for the 2019-20 school year. This is a first for Nacogdoches High School to have a student holding a state office position for TSA. On top of that major accomplishment, NHS won third place as a school at the state competition. Each student participated in an event. Students could submit projects or compete onsite competitive events, such as technical problem solving, drone, and graphic design. Everyone's score was tallied up based on how they placed in their events. Our sponsors include James Mason, Bill Sims, Ashley Chandler, Amber Memes, and Dean Lester. So applause for our sponsors. So this is an extensive list, guys, so bear with me. And not all of our students here, but I do want to recognize all of them. So we're going to start off with, if I have to call your name, please come up to the front to be recognized if you are here. Abigail Stokes. So Abigail won third place in manufacturing wood turning pen pencil set experienced, fourth place in manufacturing wood turning pen pencil experienced, third place in manufacturing wood turnings not exceeding 30 board foot experienced, second place in material pen pencil set manual experienced, and fifth place in materials pen pencil manual experienced. Next, we have Rafael Cifuentes. He received third place in video editing, video editing, original finished copy beginner. And Rafael Cifuentes and Abigail Stokes also competed together in coding. Next, we have Adrian Pitts. Fourth place in graphic design artistic, also competed in webmaster. Austin Deng. Second place manufacturing wood turning not exceeding one board foot experienced. David Connor Whitten. Second place video editing, video editing, original finished copy beginner. David Lebaliff. If I messed that up, I apologize. So David has a lot of awards here, so bear with me here. All right, David. First place, materials pen pencil manual beginner. First place manufacturing wood turning pen pencil set beginner. First place manufacturing wood turning not exceeding one board foot beginner. Second place manufacturing wood turnings not exceeding 10 board foot beginner. First place materials leather beginner. First place CNC cam laser engraver six to 10 parts beginner. And second place materials pen pencil set manual beginner. Next, we have Samuel Jacobs. First place CNC cam laser engraver 11 or more parts experienced. So Sam and David also competed and received second place drone competition, third place technology problem solving, and they also competed in structural design and engineering. Isaiah Wright. Second place video editing, video commercial 60 seconds. Ivan Blanco. Fourth place manufacturing wood turnings not exceeding 20 board foot experienced. Yvette Hernandez. Competed in children's story. Seventh place graphic design artistic. First place computer generated original drawing or painting BW or black and white experienced. And second place 2D animation 30 second max experienced. That was computer generated original drawing or painting, right? So, next one, we have Jasmine Torres. Second place second, or 2D animation 30 second max experienced. Next, we have the group of Giovanni Santiago Marquez, Jose Garcia, Jason Martinez, and Jerry Moreno. Third place dimension materials more than 50 BF experienced. John Cooter. Competed in manufacturing word turning, wood turning not exceeding two board foot beginner. Jose Alamendares. Third place sound editing, audio editing must apply, original finished copy 60 second max experienced. Jose Resendez. Fourth place club t-shirt beginner. Katherine Kiplinger. Second place materials restoration individual furniture experienced. Mackie Johnson. Competed in CNC cam mill router, single piece not exceeding 20 inch by 20 inch beginner. Next, we have another group. Monirith Heng, Megan Coffey, Cameron Daniels, Matthew Clark, David Limberry, and Jennifer Lee. Seventh place biotechnology design. Pablo Chavez. Competed in board game design. And last, but not least, Taylor Watson competed in photographic technology. So the second place drone competition and the third place problem solving for Samuel Jacobs and David are really important for us, both as major accomplishments. And Sam Jacobs being elected state vice president is the first time we have had a state officer in Technology Student Association. So another round of applause for these awesome young men and women. I'm going to hand over the microphone, and y'all can turn around and face the board for me. So you will say your name and what your plans are for your future.
My name is Abigail Stokes, and I'm doing an apprenticeship for cabinetry for a year.
I'm David Lebaliff. I plan to do electrical engineering or mechanical engineering in college.
My name is Sam Jacobs, and I plan to go to college at A&amp;M or West Point for mechanical engineering and then commission into the United States Army as an officer.
My name is Yvette Hernandez, and I plan to be a graphic designer.
My name is McKinley Johnson. I'm going to Tarleton State University to major in social work.
Hi, my name's David Limberry. I plan on going here to SFA College and be a good guy.
Hi, again, my name is Jennifer Lee. I'm planning to go to UT and major in bioengineering.
Hi, my name is Taylor Watson. I plan to pursue a degree in petroleum engineering. School undecided.
You know, Dr. Crespo, I just want to say to these students, I'm proud of each and every one of them, and your goals and plans, and you'll be successful. So we're just proud of the accomplishments you've made and so forth. And one of the things that... I'm going to ask the board while they are standing, I'm going to ask the board to come down and take a picture with them, and ask the student council to come back and join us. Is this all the high school?
We got one more.
One more?
We got one more group.
Okay, okay, we'll wait till one more group, then we'll come back.
Go ahead and turn around and then pictures. If we have any parents in the audience, if you would please stand and be recognized as well. And sponsors, if you want to come up and take a picture with them, that would be great. So parents, good job. Thank you for all of your help.
Thank you, thank you. Great. Students, give us a few minutes, and we'll come bring you back up for a picture with us.
All right.
Thank you.
One more group, one more group. So next, I want to recognize the NHS FFA. It's been a great run for this year for our two career development event teams, with several of the students never competing on a team to them making it to the state contest. So as I call your name, please come up to the front to be recognized. Our livestock judging team ranked thirty-fourth in the state out of two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight teams. Team members were Colton Dorsett, Tristan Chidster, Callie Dorsett, and Braxton Anderson. Our nursery landscape team are ranked thirty-second out of four hundred and forty-three teams in the state. Team members include McKinley Johnson, Megan Smith, Abigail Stokes, and Savannah Short. So we are working on your certificates, guys, so we will get that to you as soon as possible. But I do want to hand over the microphone again. I know a couple of y'all have already been introduced, but if you can turn and face the board for me, say your name and what your plans are.
I'm Callie Dorsett. I'm a freshman. I got four more years to figure this out. As of now, I'm thinking vet.
I'm Abigail. I am doing the apprenticeship for cabinetry.
I'm Megan. I plan to go to Blinn and start my college career in animal science.
I'm McKinley. I'm majoring in social work.
Hi, my name is Savannah Short, and I'm planning on going to college for nursing.
So we can get all the students to come back up in just a minute. If all the students will come back up, we ask the superintendent and the board to come down. Thank you, Dr. Crespo. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we've got a little bit more to go here because we've got the Mike Moses Math Counts team with us tonight. In the last two years, I've gone over there to take their picture and produce a write-up that we put on the website and send to the newspaper. And both times, I've showed up while they're doing their practice. And they've got a, something that they project up here, and I'm sure Mr. Watts can give it due justice here in just a moment. But it's what they call a lightning round, or what I would call a lightning round, where they put these incredibly complicated math problems up there, and those kids just nail it off. And, you know, they're five, five problems into it, and I'm looking at it thinking, wait, what just happened? So it is really impressive to watch. And I'm going to bring Andy Watts up here. He is a social studies teacher at Mike Moses. He's also coach of the highly successful Math Counts team. And Mr. Watts has told me that they have had a Math Counts team for six years now, and every year, they've been to the state competition. And I'm going to let him come on up here and say a few words about what all they do and to introduce these students. Mr. Watts?
Good evening, President Neal, Boardroom Members, Interim Superintendent Fraley. Math Counts, Math Counts, it's a, it's a middle school nationally recognized math competition in which sixth graders, seventh graders, and eighth graders all compete against each other, doesn't matter what grade level they're in. And they compete in several rounds. We have a local school chapter, and then we go kind of a regional chapter. It's our regional chapter, and then if you're lucky enough, you get to go on to the state championship. Well, only the top one percent of all Math Counts students make it to the state level. And I would like to say that I'm very proud of our Math Counts students. We have three eighth graders, one seventh grader, and two sixth graders who went to Austin, Texas, and competed in the math competition. Now, this year was very unique, okay? Normally, we would go down to Lufkin, Texas, to compete in our regional chapter. That's the Piney Woods chapter. And as everyone probably knows, at the beginning of the year, there was the government shutdown. And the government shutdown furloughed the coordinators for our particular chapter. And so the powers that be down in Texas with Math Counts, they had to come together and try to figure out, well, where are the, where are the schools in the Piney Woods chapter going to compete? And so they combined our chapter, the Deep East Texas Piney Woods chapter, with the entire region of East Texas. And so we had to go up against some of the biggest schools in Tyler, Longview, all the way up as far as we can, as far northeast Texas, all the way south in East Texas. And so we competed against over, I think it was about close to fifteen different schools, half of which were private schools and private academies. And so we competed, and we went through our rounds and everything, and Mike Moses, we did very well. We represented Nacogdoches well. In fact, Nacogdoches, we came, we saw, and we conquered, and we got first place. In fact, we beat our... So I suppose you could say Mike Moses and Nacogdoches ISD is the best in all of East Texas. And let's not forget, some of these cities like Dallas and Houston, San Antonio, El Paso, because there's such large numbers of schools and students, they have several chapters. But we did a really good job, and, and we practiced hard. We meet after school, we practice constantly. I want to thank Mike Moses Principal Stephen Autry for his, his support of our team, and he's very excited about what we do. We're very excited about what we do. And, and I wanted to mention this lightning round that you had mentioned. One of our students, Nicholas Bacaris, toward the end of the actual competition, while all the volunteers are grading the, you know, the tests from the teams and all that to find out who's going to be the ultimate team to go to the state competition, we have something called the countdown round, or the lightning round, in which they project not middle school problems. These are high school and college level problems that our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are answering. And they will project it up there, and literally, the moment they see it, it's like, what is the value of the square root of three? Bing, and they being in, and they're only like this far into this far of a sentence. And then they say, you know, what is the square root of three over pi, or something with that effect, you know, something outrageous, and that is correct, and they get it. It's really successful. And I'm really happy to say that eighth grader Nicholas Bacaris, who, from our team, he's one of our co-captains, what happened was they wanted every school at the competition to pick the best kid that they think could go up against the other best kids in their schools. Well, Nicholas went up there, and he, you know, he went through the first round, defeated that, the best kid from that school, went to the next one, defeated that one, defeated the next one, and it's almost like a buzzer game show almost. And toward the end, it was just him and another student from another school, and Nicholas got first place and beat the best kid at the other school, making him the best student at the competition. And we're very proud of what you did, Nicholas. Nicholas was also on the Mike Moses Math Counts team, which, of course, we advanced to the state competition, and when we got there, we did very, very well. I believe there were somewhere around close to a hundred teams represented in Texas. Now, you have to remember, these teams that go to the state championship with Math Counts represents the top one percent of Math Counts students in the whole state, maybe less than the top one percent. And out of those hundred there, we got forty-fifth place, which is, meaning we were in the top fifty percent, the top half of all, of that one percent of Math Counts students there, which equals some number I can't even calculate right now. Maybe you guys can calculate it for me. But I'm proud of them. I think they did a fantastic job. And other than that, we'd like to present some awards to them. Let's, the eighth grader Nicholas Bacaris. Nicholas, if you'll come on up. Nicholas was the co-captain of our Mike Moses Math Counts team. He was also the first place winner in the countdown round, also known as the lightning round, at the chapter competition. We'd also have a co-captain. She's been with us for all three years, Jordan Rankin, co-captain of our Math Counts team to the state championship. And we also have Kevin Zoo, an eighth grader, who also served on our team that helped us go to the state championship. You see a pattern here. We have eighth grader, eighth grader, eighth grader, but let's not forget sixth grader Nixon Long for coming on the team and helping the team get to the state championship. Now, this comprised our four-person team who made it to the state championship for us. There are also two others. In fact, at the competition, they take one team and two individuals. One team and our two individuals, Don Manduano, seventh grader, and sixth grader Julian Bruce. So I am so proud of these students, the long, hard work, the dedication they have. They're eager to learn. Math Counts focuses a lot on some of the complex problems that we have, logic, a lot of skills, code breaking. In fact, Nicholas's nickname for our team is the code breaker. We give him the code breaking questions. And other than that, it's just a well-rounded group. I'm really going to miss Nicholas and Jordan and Kevin as they move on to high school, but I know they'll do great things. And our future leaders here coming on up, our sixth graders and seventh graders, I'm really proud of them all. And, and that's it. So that's six years in a row to the state championship for Mike Moses and Nacogdoches ISD.
I'm going to ask the board to come down and take a picture of these kids and the superintendent in just a minute and join us. And parents, thank you all for your commitment, picking kids up after school. Thank you. your support, the extended hours for standing after school and picking up our, picking up your students, our students, and thank you so much. And Coach, for six years, thank you for your great work. Thank you. One of our board members, Mr. Fitch, has a question, I think.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Wondering if the three of our eighth graders here are planning to move or into the STEM Academy next year? All three? All three.
Congratulations there.
We look forward to seeing you back here.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitch. Thank you. Dr. Crespo is going to be excited about these students coming to the high school. Thank you all. Next up is the Interception and Tenure Report. We'll ask Mr. Fraley at this time.
Thank you, President Neal. Well, congratulations to our senior class of 2019. They have a couple of things happening this week, this month. They'll begin next week with the senior clapouts. Whoops. Okay, all right. Now, you sat down, I thought you were done, man.
Mr. Fraley, I thought I was done. We have two NISD employees who have been honored by Workers' Compensation Solutions Program, which is administered by Edwards Risk Management Incorporated, and that's the firm that oversees Nacogdoches ISD's workers' compensation policy. The Safe Employee Recognition Program has singled out Emma Garcia and Lashandra Watson. Ms. Garcia is from Plant Services, and Ms. Watson is from Transportation. And I'm going to ask first, Ms. Watson, if she's here tonight, to come on up. While she's coming up, I'm going to talk a little bit here more about this. It's, the many employees that are recognized in this program, which is called SOAR Hire with Safety, a select number were chosen by the firm's committee for a hire award, and these employees went above and beyond for safety by doing things like helping others avoid injury, consistently reminding others of safe practices, and routinely wearing proper safety and protective equipment. And both Ms. Watson and Ms. Garcia, who we'll have up here in a moment, have received a Safe Employee Recognition Campaign shirt and jacket. So Ms. Watson, let me get this out for you right here.
Congratulations. Yeah. Awesome stuff.
I'm also going to ask Mike Davis with Plant Services to come on up here and to come on up with Ms. Garcia. Come on, guys. And they are going to, we're going to make a presentation... And they are going to, we're going to make a presentation to her as well. You might remember last year, we did this at the same time. We had some employees who were recognized that go above and beyond to do things the right way, as the letter said from the insurance firm. Mr. Davis, why don't you step on up here?
All right. Thank you. To President Neal, to members of the board, to Superintendent Fraley, and to the audience. We're just excited about being here. Six years I've been with the district, and this is the first time we've had an opportunity to recognize someone for this occasion. So I take great pride in presenting this award to Emma Garcia. Emma, who is a custodian at Mike Moses. And Cindy Garcia is her team leader. She came to support her to certainly be a help in this worthy award. So we thank you, Cindy, and also thank you, Emma, for your hard work. Now, there's four emphases that we place on our custodial staff. We ask them to come to work every day, ask them to work while you're here, take pride in what you do, and then make sure we love on these kids. And so Emma certainly is an epitome of that, and we certainly thank her for her efforts, and we want her to continue keeping up the good work.
Let's go ahead and get a picture of these guys.
Okay, board, let's take one more picture. I'm sorry, let's take one. This is great. And Mr. Davis, thank you, and the employees, thank you for your commitment, our students. Thank you. One more.
Mr. Fraley, you're clear to go.
Thank you, sir. President Neal, may I presume, sir?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Landbarger. Well, congratulations to our Nacogdoches High School Class of 2019 for their upcoming activities. They'll begin next week with tradition, they call Senior Clapout Day, where they'll go out to their former elementary school with their cap and gown, and they'll see students there and probably teachers there as well. And they'll celebrate their accomplishments, and they'll clap out with the students there and encourage them to keep moving forward as well and to celebrate everyone's accomplishments. And the night that they're looking forward to is Friday, May 31st, 8:00 PM at the William Morris Johnson Coliseum with Campus SFA. We'll have our graduation exercises. We're very excited about that. On the day before, we'll have Malcolm Rector, Technical High School graduation at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. At 9:00 AM on Friday, May 24th, they'll have their senior scholarship assembly also at the high school auditorium. And the teachers will complete their year officially Monday, June 3rd. I wonder if they know that? And we'll have a brief awards ceremony that morning as well to celebrate their year and some service awards as well. This is coming Monday, May 20th at 6:00 PM, we'll have our, what we hope to become an annual, retiree dinner celebration, the seven center. We're excited by having our retirees out there with some of their guests to celebrate some tremendous, tremendous careers, tremendous contributions to our society. We really appreciate them. So that'll be our retiree dinner on May 20th at 6:00 PM. We've been told by Tech dot that they will be putting in a long-term complete closure of the intersection of Regay and Austin Street between, from Regay and Austin up through to North Street for about two to three months. So, things we'll be letting out soon, but that intersection will be completely closed while they move utilities. Wednesday, May 22nd, Dragons United will take place at NHS. We'll have general led students working with special needs students throughout the event. And we're excited about this. It's a combination of the Career and Technology Education Department and the district's Student Support Services. Really appreciate, they'll begin with the pep rally in the gym and move to the stadium for the competitions. And the week of May 6th was Teacher Appreciation Week here in Nacogdoches, and we really do appreciate our teachers. And we can't, we can't overstate the important role that they play each and every day. All of us in this room have a teacher they can thank. And so we just take time out for this one special week to salute our teachers, although we should be saluting them year-round. And I think this is correct, on Thursday, May 23rd, it's going to be a spring game in NHS. So we're looking forward to the new addition of the Dragon Football Team. Mr. President, that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley.
Mr. President, if I could take a moment?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to recognize Evelyn Saucera and her staff and the rest of the district staff that put together the cultural celebration. I want you to know that it was well-attended, very, very inspiring, and wonderful to watch the kids dance their dances. It was just amazing. I'd like to give you guys a hand, because you guys took a lot of work, for all of you to do that.
Thank you. Thank you. We will not hear public comments. Individuals listening to speak must complete the form located on the table by the entrance door and turn in prior to the meeting. Comments will be kept to a maximum of three minutes. Groups of five or more individuals having the same concern should have a single spokesperson for the group. This open forum is not the time or place to make complaints by the district employee. The board's specific complaint policies and procedures are presenting those concerns. The board cannot respond to comments in this open forum, but we can inform you of district policies and procedures. The total time allotted for the portion of this meeting is 30 minutes. Mr. Michael Morton, will keep time for us, and I will call it to the speaker's attention should their time limit expire. We have three speakers tonight. We're going to begin with Oliver Moore. Thank you, Oliver. Come on around, students. That's great. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
My name is Oliver Moore, and I think we need more school gardening, because it's, I think it's important for kids to learn more about outdoor education. And, for example, I was at a school gardening program one time, and we found a monarch butterfly and its chrysalis, and it was making it chrysalis. It was really cool to see. And the next time I came, it was complete, it completed its chrysalis, and that was the second stage of its life cycle. And then the third time we came, the butterfly was gone, the chrysalis was open, so the life cycle was complete. And that was a true life story of a butterfly life cycle that I got to see. It was pretty cool. And then, and then if we have more school gardening, then we have more outdoor education, and it can be one of the subjects for school, and we can have, and the kids can have a lot of fun. And I hope every school gets to have a school gardening soon. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Oliver. Great job. Thank you. I'd like to Victoria.
My name is Alexa Victoria. I'm eight years old, and I go to school at TJR Elementary School, and I like riding my bike and playing with my pets. I also have found a new interest in gardening, and I want to talk to you a little bit about The garden club is important to me, because I have learned to make my own garden and plant different fruits and vegetables. There's nice people there, and they have taught me a lot about gardening. They are part of the reason why I started my own garden at home. I have cauliflower, broccoli, cabbage, peppers, cucumbers, lettuce, and several buckets of kale that I have shared with friends and family. I have also planted some strawberries, blueberries, and pineapple that I hope I can give, that I hope I can give some fruit this year. I think eating smart makes me improve my education, and I get to have fun while I'm learning. Fruits and veggies are healthy for you. My mom says it makes you smarter when you eat them, like broccoli, spinach, and other leafy greens. And carrots make you see better. When you have healthy food to eat, it helps you think better and gives you energy. I love gardening, because plants are important to our health and community and our world. Thank you for bringing garden club to my school.
Thank you, Alexa. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
I think I just barely got it. Thank you. I could just brag on these kids and all the other kids I get to work with every week for my whole three minutes, so I'll just say big kudos to these guys. So, I just, I wanted to say that, that it's been a pleasure to work with school gardening for the last couple of years here in Nacogdoches and the district, and both at SFA Gardens and an after-school program. We, I just wanted to give a couple of updates with the NAC Gardens Network, the volunteers that are doing school garden programs in Nacogdoches. At the end of this academic year, we will have organized nearly 10 service learning days at varying sites to help with school garden installations and maintenance projects. Those usually happen on a Saturday, and we invite families and kids, and it's usually, there's a learning component involved. We get a lot of work done, too. They're really fun. Our total amount of service hours recorded has been about 1,500 hours so far this year, and that's just the recorded, so it's probably a lot more than that. And we met, and a lot of those have been SFA students, so go SFA students. We met last month with the principals at the, at the district-wide meeting to give them a brief overview of school garden programs in the district, and there seemed to be a lot of support and inspiration in the room, and so that was cool. Last week, a few members from the NAC Gardens Network, Shannon Morrison from Agrolife, Mike Moore from the NAC Public Library, Kylie Altier, last year's Teacher of the Year at BQJ, an avid school gardener, and myself, had the pleasure of meeting with Dr. Hill. And it was really exciting to connect with her and hear that we're kind of all on the same page with understanding the vast benefits of outdoor education and school gardening, ranging from improved academics, health, and nutrition outcomes. We also started the conversation about what it will take to keep these programs going for the long term and reaching and hopefully accessing more students and our student body. So life and career changes for Kylie at BQJ, I don't know if you know, she's having a baby soon, for Mike, helping out with the carpenter program, Holly at Fredonia, myself, there, we, that might limit our ability to spearhead coordination efforts in the years to come. So, after much research and assessment, it has been, become increasingly clear that school gardening and its wide-ranging benefits won't last without the key role of a garden coordinator or an outdoor educator coordinator. This position doesn't need to be duplicated for each school. Rather, it could be somebody who helps organize all the moving pieces that make up these, these programs throughout the district, at least at the elementary level. So it sounded like this upcoming school year's budget may already be set in stone, but Dr. Hill seemed optimistic. We might be able to explore a staff position for the upcoming 2020, 21 year. And I'd love to continue our collaborative work to grow school gardens in NAC. Our Strategic Planning Committee would love to be, be part of any sort of brainstorming that the district might have on that possibility. And we'd love to share our research, our experience, our input on how to build lasting school garden programs here, all the while improving student performance, community involvement, and teacher retention at the same time. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We understand and appreciate the value of education and gardening, and I'm going to need one of those young people to help me with my garden at home. Thank you all, and the volunteers and the principals. Thank you. We'll to the consent agenda. Unless removed from the consent agenda, all items listed will be acted on with one motion. If there is a board member who wishes to discuss my item on the consent agenda separately, please indicate the agenda letter. It will be set aside for further discussion and separate vote. Board, at this time, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I so move that the board approve, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, second approval of the consent agenda. All in favor with a sign of aye?
Aye.
All opposed, a sign of nay? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We'll now move to discussion and action agenda. We will now proceed with the discussion action. All items listed will be discussed and acted on separately. Item A, consideration of purchase of real property located at 5221 Southeast Stallings Drive, lots 4D and 4E, block 64, City of Nacogdoches. Mr. Fraley, we refer it to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is another parcel of land that we're deciding to purchase for the Carpenter School Site, another five acres located at the address you just mentioned there, and we have reached terms with the owners, and we're ready to move forward with the contract.
Thank you. Board, do we have a motion on item A?
Mr. President, I make a move that Nacogdoches ISD Board approved the purchase of real property located 5221 Southeast Stallings Drive, lots 4D and 4E, block 64, City of Nacogdoches, under terms discussed in the closed session, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate any remaining terms and to execute purchase contract for the property on behalf of Nacogdoches ISD.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and second. In the further discussion on this particular item, all in favor of approval of this motion, a vote by a sign of aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion passing, members.
I forgot to mention this, but I was over at Carpenter two days ago, and there was a big drilling type rig there, and I went up, I stopped and went in and talked to them, and I said, "What's going on here?" And they said, "Well, we think there's a school that's going to be here." And I said, "Yeah, there's going to be a school here." "So what are you doing?" And he says, "Well, we're doing core samples, 16 core samples." That means we are on the road.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Grom. The next item on board is item B, consideration of nomination to Leadership Tasked Class of 2020. Just want to take a minute and, with the audience, Tech Association School Boards has conducted a leadership class several years, and the class of 2020 has been, looking for participants. It'll be 36, co-hosted by 36 students. The program will consist of five sessions. It's an opportunity for TSB to work with board members across the state and develop and grow board members into the best quality we possibly can. At this time, Dr. Gromen is, is planning on attending at this time, but Dr. Gromen, you maybe want to add some additional information about the program?
Well, what I want to explain is, I'm just applying, and they have to do the selecting. So, this is a great opportunity to expand my training and leadership abilities in this public arena in, in school board. It's an opportunity where iron sharpens iron. There'll be more experienced people there. They will help me get better vision, better understanding, and we're going to be able to see a lot of things that we wouldn't see that's working in other districts. And we never know, as we discuss those things, that can have some very positive things can put on top of the, all of the positive things going on right now. So, that's, that's where we stand, just... So that's, that's where we stand, just applying at the, at the moment and waiting to see what happens.
Thank you, Dr. Grom, board. We ask for a motion at this time.
Mr. President, I would nominate Dr. Tyrell Grom to apply for the Leadership TASB Class of 2020.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Well, motion is second and further discussion. All in favor, vote of a sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Dr. Grom, thank you. Item C, consideration memorial plaque honoring Clarence Bo McMichael at Dragon Stadium. We'll turn it over to Mr. Fraley at this time.
Thank you, President Neil. I'm wanting, with the worship permission, want to pull this item down from tonight. See some additional information from some of you that we want to have a more comprehensive process to add to policy CW Local. There's complete support for this honor. There's complete support for this honor. The question is, are there other things we want to consider? And so the board asks us to work on this a little more. Mr. Neil, I would even suggest, maybe when I appoint a, a member to, a committee to work with the staff and myself to kind of put a little light into the policy.
Yes, sir. And what happened is that the committee will work together and come up with some recommendations.
Yes.
Our criteria. Board, I'm gonna ask Pastor Urban, will you, my representative of board, serve on this committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
And we'll bring it back. Again, there's complete support for this recognition.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fraley. Thank you. Next are reports on the agenda of reports. And at this time, impact of property value changes. Ms. Barbara, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Neil, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. TEA has a new requirement, a new indicator for the first rating system, the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, which requires the board to discuss the impact of property value changes within 120 days of the district adopting its budget. That's next month. So you have a spreadsheet in front of you. And basically, what that spreadsheet shows, it's labeled impact of property value changes, first indicator required discussion. What it shows is we have, we collect taxes every year. And we have property values, current property values where we collect those taxes. Well, what we don't collect in taxes to bring up our funding, the state kicks in the rest. But the state looks at prior year taxes. So if you, let's say you didn't have a very good, if your property values were down in prior year, but they're up in current year, well, then the state's going to kick in more money. If your property taxes were higher in prior year, then they're gonna kick in less money. When you have a stable property values in your, in your district, like we do, you don't feel the impact of this change in property taxes. And this is supposed to be a discussion. So if you have any questions, I will try to answer them.
So what you're saying is, the way that the tax rate is at, is that at this point in time? They're figuring it out by what it was last year?
Yes. Yes. That, that's how it's been for years. This is just a new indicator on our first report that we have to discuss it. But this is how the state funds us, and it has been for many years this way.
In fact, the concern of the state is how districts and other taxing entities calculate their values. Because the total taxes collected is based on your values. And if your values are lower, then you're collecting fewer dollars locally and it costs the state more. State wants to make certain that we're not undervaluing ourselves, getting more money from them. Which pretty much is what it is.
Mr. President, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
On that, on that note, Mrs. Barbara, if I recall correctly, last year, we did not, our appraisals did not meet the, I'm gonna call it the integrity test, and we were, we were penalized somewhat. I'm hearing that that case occurred again this year, that we, that the appraisal districts again was not, is it not certified?
Right.
What potential impact is that going to have on us this year?
Well, we were not penalized because we, we came into compliance. Our, we, the district appraisal CAD did go and reevaluate their property values, raise them, and collected taxes on that higher value. So there, it's the same thing again this year. He, Gary Woods is planning on fighting it. But it, you know, if, if he loses, then we will raise our property values and collect taxes on that. So we will not be facing a penalty. Right.
I'm sorry. If they raise, what kind of, what percentage they would? Does it matter?
Well.
It varies, you know.
Right.
They may have a range that they expected to be in. And then we have to make the case of why it is or why it is not. But again, I, I need to be very clear. The school system itself does not set appraisal values. It's down to the central appraisal district. We don't do the appraisals as a district.
Ms. Barbara, do you know the timeline for Mr. Woods' presentation when he's gonna make the request?
I do not, but I can get that information for you.
Thank you. Board, any other, this is a report item. Any other, any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. Item B is School Health Advisory Council, yearly summary for 2018 and 19. Dr. Young is gonna present for us this evening. Thank you, Dr. Young.
How are you?
Thank you.
Gary Dial could not be with us this evening, so I'm presenting for her. Good evening, President Neil, board members, and term superintendent Fraley. The Shack Committee is a committee that is required by the state for each district to have. And we are required to report yearly. So I'm gonna go through the report. It's on page 141 in your board book. Following the guidelines established in Texas law, Texas Education Code Title II, subtitle F, chapter 28, subchapter A, 28.004, the local school health advisory council shall submit to the Board of Trustees at least annually a report that includes any council recommendation concerning the school district's health education curriculum and instructional related matters that the council has not previously submitted to the board, any suggested modification to a council recommendation previously submitted to the board, and a detailed explanation of the council's activities during the period between the date of the current report and the date of the last prior report. So this year, the NAC ISD Shack Committee met four times over the course of 2018-2019 school year. The committee membership met the state guidelines and consisted of a parent employee, invited parent employee of each school within our district, including Malcolm Rector, as well as district personnel representing counseling, social work, the Nacogdoches Police Department, student nutrition, and nursing. Our committee was overseen by myself, Audrey Young, the Director of Student Support Services, and chaired by Gary Dial, Coordinator for Shack. New to Shack this year were invitations to 18 community members who work directly with our parents and students. The community members were a valuable resource in deciding what recommendations would be necessary for our students. The Shack Committee focus this year has been to explore the variety of resources available, both free and with a cost, to provide our students with curriculum in the area of health and wellness. As part of the research, the committee viewed presentations by Esteem, Harold's House, Expect, Respect, and the Department of State Health Services, DSHS, which included a sampling of materials as well as question and answer services with, by each of the presenters. Based on data collected and through extensive collaboration with district personnel and community stakeholders, the Shack Committee has determined that there is a need for our students to receive a specific health and wealth, health and wellness information per the guidelines set forth by chapter 115, Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills for Health Education. So number one, referring back to the first element that we're required to report, as of this report, the Student Health Advisory Committee is requesting the Nacogdoches Board of Trustees' consideration for development of a structured health and wellness education program to be implemented at the middle and high schools. Number two, there are no modifications to any previous council recommendations submitted to the board. And number three, a detailed explanation of the council's activities is attached to this report and are also available to the public. The dates, times, and minutes to the meetings are posted on the NAC ISD website under the Student Support Services tab for Shack. The recommendation from Shack to the NAC ISD Board of Trustees is to approve the development and implementation of a health and wellness program utilizing FTEs already in existence at the middle and high school levels following chapter 115, Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills for Health Education. So the budget impact and while the intention is to find sources that are free of charge and to use personnel that already exist within our district, there is the potential of minimal cost, but none has been determined at this time. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am. In the past, we used to teach a class called Wellness. And I believe it was course 110. We coaches were teaching them every other day when we were activities. It's not enforced anymore, is it?
No, sir, it is not. We did a district-wide survey, all, of all of the PE teachers and as well as the nurses to find out what, and the social workers, to find out what different programs were being taught. And of course, they have some puberty programs and some self-care that's, that's taught intermittently, but nothing that's consistent throughout the district and just in PE, you know, for all the students or in a health class in particular.
Is the fitness gram test still?
Fitness gram test is still in play, and we do report that to TEA. Yes, sir.
And do we get results back?
We do get results back. Yes, sir.
Okay. And beginning of the year, I guess Mr. Dial explained that they're gonna invite a lot of parents to get involved. Did they?
Yes, we had a huge attendance. Once we moved, we had our first meeting at lunchtime.
Right.
And once we moved it to after school, we have, have the meeting at 4:30. And it lasts until 5:30 or 6 o'clock. We, we, our attendance went up threefold. I mean, we had at times 18 or 20 people there. And really good responding, responses from the community members as well as the parents that participated on the program.
Right. Next question I have is concerning SAM's Law. Is it affecting us any? Has it been, are we gonna enforce teachers' learning about seizure?
Oh, that, okay. That's something else. Okay, I know what you're talking about. Yes. We, actually, we do. We have a seizure protocol in, in process. This is something separate from Shack. But I will answer your question in that, you know, that is before the legislation at this time to add a video component. The Clarity has, Clarity has presented that to the legislation. But we currently have everything in place that we're supposed to have in place for, through our nurses, and we do seizure training on campuses specifically for teachers that have students that have, are on seizure protocol.
Okay, the final question. The CPR was, they were talking about would be required for the graduates?
That is correct. CPR, that, that's also outside of Shack, but I'll be glad to answer that question as well. CPR is required, but they're not required to actually receive certification in CPR. They're just supposed to be introduced to CPR. And so, and that is designated on their transcript when they graduate from high school.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just on a side note, we received a, a large donation from the Pontywoods Health Committee for all new CPR.
Monika.
Monica, yes. And so we'll be able to implement more this next year.
Thank you.
I just had a question regarding the membership of, of the participants in the Shack. It says 18 community members. Is that, is that correct?
That was in addition to the Shack, the board-approved Shack Committee. We ended up also having 18 community members as well. And they just participated, you know, as people who provided guidance. They were not actual members of the committee.
Dr. Young, will you let Dr., Mrs. Dial know we appreciate her leadership? She's done it for several years. And at the same time, thank you all for making it available for parents in afternoon session. Know it gives you a long day, but thank you for doing this.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I had a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. Not quite off the, not, yeah, Dr. Young, thank you. I, I do want to echo his, thank you, you know. I think this is the most comprehensive report we've had back from Shack that I can recall since I've been on the board. So thank you. I, I like this a lot. And, and number two on there, you mentioned no modification, any, to, any previous recommendations submitted to the board. I would love to see those previous recommendations.
Me too. Me too. Okay, okay. We, and I, and I try to do a little fishing to see. So one of the, one of my goals this year as, you know, overseeing Shack was to make sure that we brought us into compliance, which we did, to update all of our policies and procedures, and we did that as well. And then to make sure that we followed the law as it is established for those first three elements. So we have done all of those things this year, as well as expanded it to the community. So I'm very proud of the work that's been done.
Thank you for your leadership on that. And it is exciting to see so many community people, members involved in that. We, we, many of our board members, we had an opportunity to attend a TASB workshop on Tuesday afternoon. And one of the things that they brought up there that, that said, board members, you should ask your Shack, so here you go, is about instruction on suicide and parent awareness of behavioral health concerns. So when you talk about a wellness education program, that's pretty broad with that topic being included in such a program.
One of the, one of the programs that we investigated that came and presented to us does cover that topic. And so, of course, that would be part of any curriculum that would be adopted. That would go through our teaching and learning, you know, curriculum adoption. And so we, of course, would want to make sure that we cover all the elements that are required.
Mr. Fraley, I think this next question would probably be more appropriate for you. I see a recommendation here, and I'm sure staff in your curriculum department will have an opportunity to review that. But what, what comes first in that? Is it, is it that the board would take action to say, yes, we like this idea? Or is a curriculum developed first and then approved by the board?
Either or.
Okay.
If, if the board says we want something done, then we'll, we'll get it done and then bring it back for the board to review and, and require it approved as well.
We, Ms. Fitch, we, Dr. Hill and I have had this discussion in that we would share out this information with y'all. And then, you know, based on Mr. Fraley and the board's recommendation, we would come back to y'all with, with a curriculum recommendation or a recommendation for next year. So this, the purpose of this was to report to you this month and then in the future be able to provide a more comprehensive response to any requests that you have.
Wonderful.
Speaking, I would, I would love to see that, that move forward.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
That's a live item, board. I just want to remind you, board, that dress code goes in effect for June through August, next board meeting, so we can take off the ties and dress and look cool next month. Ask for information. We need a motion to adjourn.
Reverend.
Pastor, motion, motion to adjourn.
I so move.
We have a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
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 All opposed, motion will adjourn. Thank you.